Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, September 6, 2016, at 6:30 PM with the Palm Coast City Hall for a regularly scheduled meeting of the Palm Coast City Council. Would you please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mayor Nettles.
Here.
Vice Mayor Shipley.
Yeah.
Councilmember Di Lorenzo.
Here.
Councilmember Nobiel.
Here.
Mayor, all members are present.
Thank you. Before we proceed with our regular agenda, I would like to recognize two people in the audience who successfully won the election in the primary. Candidate for mayor and mayor-elect Melissa Holland. Melissa, where are you? And councilman-elect, and we have him seated sooner rather than later, Bob Cuff in the rear. Bob? Congratulations to those two, and congratulations to everyone who entered the campaign. That's what democracy is all about. First item on our agenda is the approval of the August 16 city council meeting and the August 30 city council workshop. Are there any additions, corrections, or is there a motion to approve?
Move/approve.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Agenda item number two, proclamation recognizing the 10th anniversary of the University Women of Flagler. Is Shipley in receiving the proclamation? A whole bunch of women.
This is a long one. Whereas the University Women of Flagler was founded in 2006 as an organization whose purpose is to unite graduates of regional accredited post-secondary educational institutions in order to promote equity, education, intellectual growth, individual worth, and development of opportunities for women and girls in Flagler County, including Palm Coast. Whereas the University Women of Flagler has been promoting positive societal change in the community, and whereas the University Women of Flagler has been studying, taking action on, and advocating for policies and programs related to the community, cultural interests, and high standards in education, and whereas the University Women of Flagler in part works to accomplish its goals through member participation in interest groups, such as the book club, which emphasizes reading about Florida history and culture and traditions from areas outside the region, and a group which visits regional historical and cultural sites, and whereas the University Women of Flagler has provided the community, including Palm Coast residents, with financial assistance in times of emergency, non-perishable goods to a local food bank, and donated funds that enabled residents of Daytona North to have access to potable water, and whereas the University Women of Flagler has held various events in which the community was able to participate, such as nationally recognized interactive theatrical event, murder mystery dinners, a jazz dinner event, and afternoon tea and fashion shows, and whereas the United Women of Flagler has assisted over 50 Flagler County high school graduates, including some from Palm Coast, with $67,350 in scholarships, and whereas the University Women of Flagler has sponsored students, including some from Palm Coast, and the Flagler County Education Foundation's Take Stock and Children program by donating over $8,000. Now therefore, the mayor and the city council of the city of Palm Coast hereby recognize the University Women of Flagler's 10th anniversary and congratulate them on their dedication to the citizens of Palm Coast and all of Flagler County. Signed the 6th day of September, 2016, City of Palm Coast Mayor John Nettles. Congratulations, and you did a lot. Anyone like to speak?
Hi, founding mother. Hi, I'm Jane Neely. I am the founding mother of the University Women of Flagler. As you can hear from the proclamation, we've been very involved in the community, done a lot of things to help a lot of people. Our main purpose is to raise money for scholarships, and we've found some really amazing young women, most of whom are from Palm Coast, to send them off on their way, and the things that they want to do with their lives if they accomplish half of it can be terrific. It's always great to hear what they want to do. So I want to thank you for recognizing us today, and it's very weird being on the side. So we do hold some events that maybe you want to participate in if you hear about them. If we're lucky, we get our events advertised in the local media sometimes. We have a big one coming up in January, which is a nationally recognized show called "Catechism," Late Night Catechism, and it's really, really a riot. So if you're busy, not busy, on January 29, it's at the Orme Beach Performing Arts Center. So that'd be a great way to help us out. In the meantime, I want to thank you and the residents of Palm Coast for recognizing us. Thank you.
Agenda item number three, proclamation recognizing arts in education week.
Whereas arts education comprising a rich array of disciplines, including dance, media, arts, music, theater, visual arts, and more, is a core academic subject and an essential element of a complete and well-rounded education for all students. And whereas arts education enables students to develop critical thinking and problem-solving skills, imagining creativity, discipline, and collaboration, alternative ways to communicate and express feelings and ideas, and cross-cultural understanding which supports academic success across the curriculum. Whereas arts education contributes to personal growth outside of the classroom, including increasing students' likelihood to participate in civic life, volunteerism, altruism, and community engagement, and whereas arts education contributes to increased attendance and graduation rates, elevates academic achievement, and prepares students for college, career, and citizenship readiness. And whereas arts education is an integral part of life in the United States and is an integral part of a complete education which contributes to the vibrancy and vitality of communities across our nation, now therefore be proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of Palm Coast that September 11 through the 17, 2016, be officially designated Arts in Education Week in the city of Palm Coast and commend its observance to all citizens. Signed the 6th day of September, 2016, John Nettles, Mayor.
For the record, my name is Richard Hamilton, and I'm the retiring president of the Flagler Auditorium Governing Board. It's my pleasure to be amongst the stalwart friends and supporters of the auditorium here to accept your proclamation regarding supporting the Arts in Education Week. And in turn, I'm going to present the city with a flag that can be flown during the upcoming National Arts in Education Week. This flag, or similar flags, will be flown throughout the county, on our schools, and then other municipality buildings, and we can unveil it in a photo op afterwards. On September 17, at the end of the week, you can also join us in a fun 5K run or walk from the school up through the city center, with or without a masquerade costume, and with or without these fine buttons supporting arts and education, which I've got some copies for you. For 25 years, the auditorium has not only been our local performing arts center, providing professional entertainment at affordable prices, but it's also played an immeasurable part in our education of our young citizens and a hub for our arts and culture in the community. We look forward to continuing this mission over the next 25 years with continuing enhancements and expansion to the auditorium, a proud and visible entrance to the Town Center CRA on Route 100. Our 25th anniversary season will be announced shortly, so watch out for your mailboxes. And as usual, it's going to include a scintillating mix of old and new performances. It's going to start on October 10, just a month away, with a special and rare visit from the president's own U.S. Marine Band. As you say in the proclamation, arts in education has been shown to positively affect student motivation, art, attitude, creativity, and critical thinking. These are vital not only for our students in their future careers, but it's also vital to attracting the creative industries that we hope are going to make a home here in the county and in Palm Coast. We're blessed to have strong support both from you, the county, the school board, and our citizens. Thank you.
We'll come up around.
Do you want to do an angle?
Yes.
Yes, we got it the right way.
Works both ways.
How's that?
All right, maybe you can raise the flag just a teeny bit higher.
Thank you.
I love the tie. I have to get mine.
The city reps will bring up Charlie Brown.
I know, I have my tickets. That's why I said I loved that tie. I'm a Charlie Brown guy. Thank you, thank you. Item number four, presentation of the photo contest awards. Mr. Landon?
Mayor, City Council, this one is our Brandeem team really puts together on Find Your Florida, and Cindy's going to take the lead.
Oh, ye of little faith.
It's a lot to juggle, a lot to celebrate tonight. I am Cindy Lane. I'm the communications and marketing manager for the city and a member of the Brand Plus team, and I'm very excited to present tonight the awards for our fourth annual Find Your Florida photo contest. It's a great family tradition that we have to have the contest, and I'm really happy to see that a lot of our winners are here tonight, and I hope that if you have a chance as you leave to look at the photos if you haven't already looked at them on the exhibit in the hallway in the community wing. So again, this year, we've received hundreds of excellent photos about what makes Palm Coast special, the people, the natural environment, and our community spirit. And of course, our goal with this is to build community and to give the photographers an opportunity to showcase their talents while also providing the city with new photos to use for promoting our community. This year, we added two new categories. We added a category for best bird, and we also added a category for the best photograph taken by a youth, a member of the youth community. And the public contest is judged by our Brand Plus team, and we had 330 photos that met the qualifications this year from 102 photographers. So it shows that it's really growing in popularity. So I was wondering, Mayor, would you be willing to come and help me present the awards?
My pleasure. Get hold of good stuff.
All right, and for the winners who are in the audience who are going to come up, I'm only going to, some of you have multiple awards, and I'm only going to have you come up the first time, so all your certificates will be attached, and just don't lose these because your prizes are attached. Okay, so our first place winner is Stephen Sobel. This photograph is titled "Like a Feather in the Breeze," and of course, it's a snowy egret. So congratulations, Stephen. Glad to have you here. Our second place winner is Teddy Bear Picnic by Rachel Deau-Lazalle, and Rachel also received an honorable mention this evening that you'll see later. She has an honorable mention that we'll see in a little while. So our third place winner may not be here, but it's John Pescucci, and it is called "People Enjoying the Marina," and he also received another honorable mention that you'll see later. He was not able to attend, I'm pretty sure. Okay, so in our new category of best bird, our winner is Christopher Limkey, and this is a red-shouldered hawk. All right, and then we did have a winner in the public contest for the best youth category, and the winner is Selena Munoz for this picture of the baseball field. All right, and then I'm going to go through the honorable mentions, and some of the people will be coming up, and some of the people, you'll just hear the familiar names. So we have "A Stroll in the Park" by Dwayne Van Horn. Dwayne is a repeat winner from the past two years, and he also won two other honorable mentions. I know he's here. This photo is called "Beautiful View Up Canal" by John Pescucci, who we've already established is not here, and...
None of these are done with an iPhone.
I don't know. It's possible, but probably not likely. And this is another photo by Dwayne Van Horn, and this one is called "Catching Rays." We had quite a few alligator entries this year for some reason. So the next one is by Marcia Jewell, and the photo is titled "Central Park Sunset," and she's also, Marcia's also a repeat winner from some of our previous contests. All right, and then we have another one by Dwayne, and this one has a really long name, so follow me, everyone. Colored Spheres, our beautiful Palm Coast sunset jewel dancing with bubbles and walking our wonderful walk. I think the model, I think the model may be in the audience tonight as well. And then this is another photo by Rachel Deau-Lazalle, which is called Daddy with Daughter. I'm wondering, did Daughter come to the meeting? No? Okay. All right, so then our next award was taken by Richard Atchison, and it's called "Good Morning," and Rick is also a repeat winner, who has a photo on display here in City Hall. I should have mentioned that about Dwayne. And Richard also won another. And he also took this photo, which is called, the first one was called "Good Morning," and this one's called "Morning Fog." And then our last of the overall honorable mentions is "Protecting the Baby" by Gwen McCarthy. You'll see when we do the honorable mentions now for the best birds, she also had two in that category. So our best bird honorable mentions, we have one that's called "Two Birds" by Emily Valarejos. And then the last two were taken by Gwen McCarthy. The first is Echet in full mating plumage. And the last of our honorable mentions in the best bird is called "Four: Sand Hill Cranes Ahead." So I suppose that means it was taken at the golf course. So in addition to our public contest, we run a concurrent contest for employees and their immediate families, and in that contest this year, we had nine photographers who submitted 159 photos, and they're judged by our Boosting All Morale team. And we had the same categories, and we do have some familiar names among our winners, so I think all of this year's employee winners have placed in previous years, so you'll see some familiar photographers in this group. So our first place winner is Heather Priestapp for Arbor Day Fun. And Heather also won an honorable mention in our best bird category that you'll see in a few minutes. And our second place winner is Tom Hanson. I hope Tom's coming out. Yes, there he is. And his photo is called "Saving a Spot," and it was taken at Waterfront Park Pier, Tom also won three honorable mentions that you'll see in a minute. And then our third place winner is Lucy Nabaco for Hungry Squirrel. And Lucy also won in our best bird category, and she also won two honorable mentions, and so the best bird is right here, and it's "Great Blue Heron in Golden Light" by Lucy And we do have a few honorable mentions. Our first is Butterfly Hat by Barbie Bembry, also taken at Arbor Day. Doesn't look like Barbie's here. She also won two honorable mentions. And then we have City Center Strong by Tom Hanson. And then by Lucy Nabaco, we have I Heart Palm Coast. And also by Lucy, we have Kayakers. This is always a favorite. It's called "Our Finest" of the Palm Coast Fire Department Honor Guard. That photo is taken by Tom Hanson, and also by Tom Hanson is this photo of River Travel. We also have Slide Selfie by Barbie Bembry. And Strong Men by Barbie Bembry. And in the honorable mentions for best bird, we have Heather's additional photo, which is called "Sun Bathing," and it's a loggerhead strike. I am, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Nettles. So as you can see, Palm Coast is a really fun place to live. We had so many excellent entries this year. It's a very hard decision to make when we do the judging. I want to congratulate all of our winners this year, and we look forward to all of you participating next year.
Over my own feet. Is that it?
That's it.
Why we work so hard to keep ourselves compatible with Mother Nature. It's part of our wonderful environment. Thank you to all the photographers and photographers yet to come. Oh, now we've got a difficult one. Agenda item number five. We have two vacancies to fill on the Leisure Services Advisory Committee, and we have two applicants. With, unless there is any objection, is there a motion to appoint the two to the vacancies on the board?
My move, we appoint Bernard Kirchner and Jennifer Wright to the Leisure Services Advisory Committee.
Second. Moved in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries without objection, and congratulations to those two. This brings us to the consent agenda. There's only one item on the consent agenda. So before city council acts on this, would anyone like to speak on agenda item number six, which is a building service maintenance contract? See no one? All right, city council. Yes, Mr. Mayor, I was wondering about the $250 difference.
The Palm Coast company is no longer in business, so...
That is going to be a problem for what I was going to say.
Yeah.
So I withdraw my thought.
Yep, we, staff looked into it, and they are no longer here, so...
Okay.
That's why they selected this one. They knew that. I did not know that last night.
All right. So the recommendation is for a contract with Building Maintenance Services, Inc. Is there a motion to approve the contract?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries without objection. Agenda item number seven, the appointment of Robert G. Cuff for District One City Council vacancy. Mr. Cuff, congratulations on getting 50% plus one in the primary. Would you please come up and be sworn in?
Mayor, I, little interruption, you actually need to take a formal action to appoint him, because this is...
Oh, okay.
This is technically...
Because he won the election.
He won the election...
Motion to appoint Mr. Cuff for the vacancy left by Councilmember McGuire for the remainder of Mr. McGuire's term.
Move/approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Now, Mr. Cuff.
Mr. Cuff, please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Robert G. Cuff, do solemnly swear...
I, Robert G. Cuff, do solemnly swear...
...that I will support, protect, and defend...
That I will support, protect, and defend...
...the Constitution and government of the United States...
The Constitution and government of the United States...
...and of the state of Florida...
And of the state of Florida...
...that I am duly qualified...
That I am duly qualified...
...to hold office under the Constitution of the state...
That I am under the Constitution, and duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the state...
...and that I will well and faithfully perform...
That I will well and faithfully perform...
...the duties of a council member...
The duties of a council member...
...for the city of Palm Coast...
For the city of Palm Coast...
...on which I am now about to enter...
On which I am now about to enter...
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Is that a photo? Cindy, I stood up for a photo. The photographers to finish. This brings us to the public participation portion of the meeting. This is the opportunity for the public to speak on any item not on today's agenda. Please come up to the podium, give us your name, and limit your contribution to three minutes.
Deborah Susswein, 28th Freeland Lane, Palm Coast. Mayor, council members. A little over a year ago, I was here requesting that the council address a problem I was having with my next-door neighbor, who was making continual anonymous online complaints about my grass being too long. I was objecting to the anonymity aspect, and it was addressed, and a modification to the code was made. I believe Ms. Grossman and Mr. Landen expressed concern about making such a change, thinking that this would result in retaliation by the accused. In my case, the complainant was the one retaliating. So first, I want to thank the council for assisting in getting that modification taken care of, so that now online complaints need to be signed. However, in the last year that the city, since the city council meeting, I was targeted by the code enforcement officer. He started sniping where my neighbor left off, and ignored other infractions on my street. During that time, I was cited for my lawn, but two properties have lawns that grew much longer than mine, never got cited. Another person has trash left out, sometimes up to five days before the pickup, never got cited. Another neighbor, in fact, my next-door neighbor, has trash in public view. No citation. And one time, the code enforcement officer told me I could get cited for the crumbling driveway. But, but I rent there, so I, you know, I'm not responsible for that, and he probably couldn't get any satisfaction targeting me on that one. I notified my landlord. He said he would get to it last spring. He never got to it. He's never been cited. I have photos that clearly demonstrate the nitpickiness of the officer, and the tempest in a teapot. I asked to have photos sent to me, and I could tell that one of them was not taken from the street, that is, in public view. When I wrote to Ms. Grossman about it, she said that the neighbor gave the code enforcement officer permission to take that shot from his driveway. And this happens to be the sniping neighbor who was harassing me last year. The Code Enforcement Board is needing tomorrow to make a decision about whether to impose a fine regarding my lawn. I sent all of you an email regarding that, and code enforcement staff, with a plea for leniency. The hearing is adding insult to injury. It's based on the complaints of a sniping neighbor, which should be taken into consideration in the light of the wise decision to modify the code, the fact that I have been unjustly targeted, and that the officer clearly crossed boundaries. In the last year, there were articles and letters to the editor of the Palm Coast Observer about arbitrary and unfair enforcement of code, either where, either it was too strict or just virtually lacking in enforcement. That was including a piece by Brian McMillan, managing editor of Palm Coast Observer. I would like to follow up on a suggestion made by Councilman DiLorenzo last year. I met to discuss this with him.
Fifteen seconds, please.
Discuss this, and I not only, I'm not the only one who's discontented resident here, but those, I'm speaking on behalf of those who've written letters or who choose to remain silent. On behalf of them and those other people, I urge you to look at this and, and take this into consideration. There are other changes need to be made, and I do have solutions.
Thank you very much.
So, thank you.
Next speaker.
My name is Fred Herndon. I live over in Grand Haven. I want to give you guys pictures of this.
Can you give it to the city clerk? Thank you.
These filters are, starting now, two whole house filters. One year ago, the water company back flushed our, our village. My wife's washing machine filled up with water that was darker than burnt motor oil. And we, I have bleed six houses in the area within 15, 20 minutes. They claimed the water was good. Okay? I brought new filters, so you can see what they look like. This is the primary filter in the picture, and you can see the color of the water we're getting. Okay? Here is the secondary whole-house filter, and it's a little bit lighter. Here is the third whole-house filter under the sink, carbon filter. And I have the water and the residue in the jar from the filter when I poured it out on Saturday. Problem with it is, the sediment clings to the bottom in an oily substance. When you shake it, it looks like brandy running down. And that's what your water department calls good, clean water to drink. I wouldn't feed that to my dog. Okay? The, on the picture that I left, I put in, I now have five filters to my refrigerator, four to the kitchen sink. There's a, on the picture, the first filter in line is now a different color in three days. And what I want you to do is to consider opening up some kind of study in Palm Coast. I'm not the only one. There are a lot of people that have contacted me in the last week. I've had filters on for almost a year. I changed the first set at the end of three months. They, they were about as bad as these. These lasted less than five months, and we were gone three weeks out of that five months. So there is a real problem, and the main thing is, would you want to drink that colored water? Because that's what we're getting in our houses in Palm Coast. I leave it to you now, because you need to make a decision on what we're going to do. I kind of know what I'm going to do. And I will wait and hear from the city, and I'm going to take this to the Water Board tomorrow, over at the, on my, over at the headquarters over here across the interstate. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Anyone have any questions?
Next speaker.
Anita Modere, Palm Coast. I also live in Grand Haven, and this is my water, without any filters, without any additional help. This is what the utility gives me. It's perfectly fine. Problem with this gentleman's water has been going on for over a year. The water utility has not done anything to help him. He's not the only one. But that water, we have a right to clean water, a right to have water that is not going to make us sick. This is a ticking time bomb for this council and for the city for not providing any help to this gentleman and to the others who have the same problem.
Jack Calaporte, Palm Coast. I have just one question to ask. With this oil wash that's going up, what kind, are they using recycled water, or are they using our good drinking water to wash cars?
This is in commercial car washes. You're talking about commercial car washes?
That's the one that they're building next to, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. Signal approach the podium. We'll close the public portion of the meeting, go back to council. Mr. Landen, the first speaker, had some complaints about code enforcement, and specifically about a code enforcement officer. Would you have Mr. Flanagan and Ms. Grossman look into this, please, and get back to council at our workshop?
If I may, I know we're done with this matter, but this is, apparently it's going to be on an agenda for Code Enforcement Board tomorrow. It's a quasi-judicial matter, so we're not, should not be speaking as to that matter. Obviously, there will be due process provided to the respondent at the hearing tomorrow for the Code Enforcement Board.
The, the code enforcement is against the individual who spoke. Is that correct?
It's my understanding.
Yeah.
Yeah, but...
I'm, I'm, now I'm interested, though, in her allegations that...
Yes.
Our staff did not perform appropriately, so that's...
Two different things.
Right. And that's what we, and we would, and we, we need to take what she has as far as information and put together, you know, if we can, you know, a legitimate response for us.
Okay.
Quasi-judicial, am I able to go to that meeting tomorrow?
You can, you certainly can go and, and witness that meeting if you'd like.
The issue of water quality. Mr. Adams, do you want to address that, or? And we'll take them in reverse order. The car washes that I am familiar with all use recycled water, and they internally recycle. I'm assuming that would be the same case with the new car wash being constructed?
I haven't actually seen the plans on that particular car wash, but most of them do recycle their water, run them through some filters. And a couple of the car washes do have reuse available to them for makeup water, if, if it's in an area where our reuse mains run. The new one will not.
Now, the issue of water quality, color.
Well, the, our water certainly has color in it, and color is naturally occurring from the well water that we take out of the ground. The, the treatment process doesn't remove all the color, so it definitely has color caused by the organics naturally occurring in the water. Our water also has minerals in it. If you removed all of that before you sent it down the pipe, it would be very aggressive water, so you have to have some minerals in there. I have to, would have to look at the individual's actual service to see if there's any issues in that part of town.
Yeah, because I, I mean, that, we understand that the minerals are in the water, but my water doesn't look anything like that. I mean, and I have filters and non-filters, and, and my well water doesn't even look like that, so, I mean...
And the other thing, it all comes from the same place, so...
Well, we got to have a problem somewhere, then, obviously.
Something's very unique on this one. We just need to look at this specific case and find out what's...
But we need to fix it. We need to fix it if it's a problem.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the Palm Coast drinking water is tested annually. Those report, those results are reported in our newsletter. The water meets all of the EPA and DEP standards.
That's correct, and it's tested. We actually do scores of tests every month that are required as part of the compliance sampling.
And I have no doubt we have the best water, you know, by, by far. But there's a problem there. We got to figure out, or identify that problem and see where, you know, let's not leave him hanging with that. It's just, that's just not right. We just got to figure it out, and that's our position. Right? Okay.
If there's a problem. But as, as Mr. Adams points out, there is color in the water, and if you have a filter that removes organic coloring material, you're going to have color. Color in and of itself does not mean that the water is of bad quality, but you've heard from the gentleman. Let's hear back what the results are. Okay. Discussion by city council matters not on the agenda. Ms. White, my sphere, why don't we start with you? Mr. DiLorenzo?
I have nothing.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Cuff?
Well, I don't want to take up a lot of time tonight, because I understand I'll get a do-over in eight weeks when the rest of the new council members are, and I promise to do better with the oath if I have to take it again. But I, I do want to say how excited I am. I think this is the first time in city history that a majority of the city council has been With respect to Mayor Nets and Ms. Shipley.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm not sure what to read into that, but that just dawned on me, sitting out there in the audience this evening, but...
Now I feel bad. I actually had a full beard this morning. I took a break from shaving as I left town, you know, and...
Well, I wasn't...
I'll undertake that as a challenge, if you may.
But just to be brief, I, I do want to thank the council and staff. This is very exciting to me, and it is an honor to be asked to complete the term of somebody that I respect as much as Bill McGuire. I found out from somebody the other day that he apparently endorsed my candidacy. I wish he'd told me 12 weeks ago, when I might have been able to use it to good advantage, but that's, that's fine. And I'm happy to be here, happy to serve, and I look forward to the next eight weeks, and hopefully it won't be another Brexit, where by the end of eight weeks, the people that voted for me will be wishing they could have a do-over themselves, but I will do my best, and thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm, I'm hoping it takes longer than eight weeks.
And let's also be careful that after November, we may have a majority of women on these, so...
Well, we, I was just suggesting, maybe we take advantage of this while we can, but I, but I have, but I have no...
Thank you, gentlemen.
But I have no idea what we can do with it, so, you know, that's fine.
Attorney of matters not on the agenda.
I can't follow that.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Discussion by city manager of matters not on the agenda.
I always have something to say. First of all, Mr. Cuff, welcome. It's, I'm really looking forward to working with you in the future. A couple of events coming up, starting tomorrow, 5:05 in this room. We have our first public hearing on the proposed budget, so anybody interested in kind of last-minute comments, we've been working on that a long time. But right here in this room, 5:05 is the first public hearing. Also, this weekend, September 10th, is our annual intercoastal waterway cleanup. A few stats on that. We already have approximately 500 volunteers are registered. You can still register through Thursday, and of course, if you show up, we'll, we'll accept it, but we always encourage people to register ahead of time, so that we can start making assignments as to where, where people are going. This is happening Saturday, starts at 8:00 a.m. at our community center. It's always a big turnout, and it's always fun to see who gets the most unusual pickup, if you will. Lastly, is starting this weekend, and running through the whole week, is the annual senior games here in Palm Coast, the Palm Coast Senior Games. And that's located all over town, depending on what the event is, and that's always a very popular event, the senior games happening, so...
You might want to mention the 9/11 ceremony.
Yes.
Sunday, 8:00 a.m.
Sunday, 9/11, 8:00 a.m.
8:00 a.m., Heroes Park. Heroes Park.
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.